I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakefield Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, September 23rd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. This is a remote meeting. In accordance with the provisions allowed by Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, September 23rd, 2021 Public Meeting of the Planning Board will be held remotely. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. For the record, tonight we have Barbara Mankowski is not present at this time. I have Peter Conroy present, Michelle McEckren present, Jack Lynch present, and myself, Mark Knox, present from the Planning Board. Also Clerk Kathy Murray is present. And that brings us to the first item on the agenda, which is a request for endorsement of the definitive plan submitted by Bissio and Sons Contracting Incorporated for a four lot subdivision located at Rachel's Way, including three Rachel's Way. Block and lot numbers 014, 04, 004, 006-2, and four Rachel's Way, which is map 14, block 4, lot 005-03, presented by Zenith Consulting Engineers. However, I don't see anybody here from Zenith. I do see Leo Bissio. Leo, my understanding of this is the appeal period is up, and we just need to act as a formality, just to read and sign the plan. Is that your understanding of where we're at?
Correct. I was just wondering, so you're gonna sign it?
Kathy? You're muted?
You do have to vote to sign and endorse the plan, and then I'll sign it, and then he can pick it up and have it recorded.
Yeah.
Okay. So I make a motion for the Planning Board to endorse and sign the plan previously referenced for Rachel's Way as presented.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, both aye. Motion carries unanimously. I'm guessing Mr. Bissio is waiting for us so he can get started. When does everybody have time to get by Town Hall, just so we can give him a sense of? When?
I can stop by tomorrow.
I'll be there tomorrow around 9:00.
I'll be there as well tomorrow. I'll get by.
You leave early though tomorrow, right? I could probably do Monday.
So Leo, you should have the plans early next week.
Okay, sound good.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Next item on the agenda is the Housing Production Plan Update. Looks like we have some costs included from Serphead. I did look through them a little bit. Did anybody else get a chance to look through those? It was tiered in three different price levels, starting at about 15 grand and going upwards towards, I think 26,000 was the highest. 15,000, 21,7, and 26,625 were the prices for Serphead to provide us with a housing production plan for the affordable units in town, and it also provides us with some strategies and game plans moving forward, housing goals. It looks like the more comprehensive prices, they offer a few more public workshops. It's basically to get the public to understand what's going on better. And there are a few more analysis lines that they'll add to what we receive as we go upwards with the home mortgage analysis, foreclosure analysis, which wouldn't be included in some of the lesser valued housing production plans. Anybody have input? Michelle?
I know that last time, I think there were a few questions, but I didn't see that those were answered. I think you had a couple items that you wanted to know if they would be included, and I think Barbara did also. But I, we haven't seen anything back from them.
Yeah, I think my main question was, is the housing production plan that we're gonna pay for, does it look like the samples we were given? Because they had like 10 and 18 year histories. So that was the one curious thing, and I know, I spoke to Barbara today, or I should say, I received a text from her. She was traveling. She was gonna try and make tonight's meeting, but I also did get turned down by the town administrator for this funding, and then he called me afterwards and said that they actually did think that they could get it on the warrant and get the funding for a fall town meeting afterwards, so. That was promising. I haven't seen a date on, or at least not on the articles that I've seen from the town administrator yet. Do we know what the date is for the fall town meeting?
November 8th.
So I would say it's safe if, and again, I'm not trying to shut off the conversation on this now, but Barbara was instrumental in getting this. And I don't really wanna make a decision without her present because she may have information that's not in this three-page estimate. So I would motion to continue this to our October 14th meeting. Kathy, does that leave enough time to post for a public hearing? Oh, we don't need a public hearing for that, right? It's just a warrant item?
Yeah.
So we're out in front of that, so we could continue until October 14th to discuss. We just need the number by town meeting, and that was confirmed by one of the selectmen.
That works.
Peter?
Yeah, Mark, for the sake of like accounting, is it just makes sense to, for the town administrator, just to carry the highest number? Enter that in, and if, if we decide, hey, we were really just gonna go with the middle, the middle estimate, they'll just, it'll, they'll just return the balance back, never spent, you know what I mean? So he can, they can get their numbers correct, like right now, rather than waiting for another three weeks? I was just thinking that, I don't know.
I'm gonna speak with him tomorrow so I can ask him that.
Okay.
I know what you're saying, but I also feel like leaving an extra 10 grand on the table, that was approved for something is probably not ideal.
Agreed, yeah. So just so like, like for myself and for anybody might be watching, like, does this pay us dividends by, but you know, does this pay the town back by having this plan? It does get us money back, correct? It's advantageous to the town to have this done, right?
I think we have to get it done no matter what, and it's just that Serphead offers the service. It's either that or we're gonna go to another entity and pay them to do our housing production plan, or we start with, I think, like Millboro has a housing authority. We pay full-time people that do our own housing production plan in-house, but then you're talking about probably two or three full-time staff members with benefits, so this is probably far more convenient.
No, that makes sense.
But I'll ask those questions as well. So would everybody agree, motion to continue until October 14th at 7:00 PM? Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, both aye. So continue that housing production plan discussion. Next item on the agenda, signed by law. So discuss amending and related definition update included in the packet were some of the changes that myself and Michelle had proposed in red. And actually, the building commissioner had helped out and went through the signed by law and added in everywhere that the word "sign" was highlighted in yellow, so we wouldn't miss anything if we did change a definition. We would be able to go through that thoroughly to not have to go back to town meetings for like a one word that we missed type of thing. I haven't had a lot of time to put into this, so I don't have any update at this point. I don't know, Michelle, you did, or you're, or Jack, you have any input?
Well, I just kind of took, so the red was Nate, his recommendations. And then I added, based on our last planning board meeting, I did add a few items with, and it's almost like a purple color. I don't know if you guys can see that, the difference between the red and the purple. And one of the things that we had talked about, I think you brought it up, Peter, was the lumens, about the brightness. And that's why I asked Kathy to include the other little document just about the lumens. It sounds like 100 lumens is, seems like it's a standard brightness. I don't know how we could get any further input on that, or who would know? But there were a couple little areas where Nate had said, you know, recommended to put in some language, and I did try to put in some, but there was a couple, I think one other spot that needed some additional help, maybe two other spots. I think we have to break it down. If you go down to the bottom, maybe not the bottom, it's page 11 out of 48 of our packet where it says add requirements for the grant of special permit. And we had talked about electronic signs should be under 12 square foot, shall be turned off during overnight hours from 11 to 6:00. I just kind of grabbed those hours. I don't know if they should be different, and then shall not exceed 100 lumens or the equivalent. And I think we could just add to whatever else, what other options we should include for the special permit as well.
I agree, and I think that if we get a town planner, the last meeting that we had about hiring, it was promising, and we actually were able to meet with some very, very professional help. I was impressed with a couple of the applicants that their abilities to write decisions seems like it'd be very beneficial to the Planning Board and zoning board of appeals. That said, I would have the goal of maybe bringing some of these things back to the Planning Board for a special permit rather than ZBA, like the signs, rather than send it to them. Any other land use? Or I'm not inclined to try and take the marijuana thing back because I think there are other issues with the Planning Board doing that. But anything that has to do with business or industrial zones, site plan review, or property use, I think that if we get a good planner in place, we should be trying to bring that back under our umbrella because it's either that or it's just a recommendation to the ZBA and and I would speak to, so the chairman over there, to not step on toes and do something that both boards could agree upon.
That sounds good.
I don't know what your thoughts are on that. What do you think about that, Peter?
So it wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to have anything for this town meeting for the signed by law anyhow, is it correct?
No, I would be having to be posting the public hearing. You know, we'd have to be leaving this meeting, telling Kathy, post something, so.
Yeah.
We're still at a, not an infant stage, but a too early of a stage to say we've even got a close rough draft.
I agree, and, and I think with starting it now, it'll be good for the spring, especially if we get a planner like between now and the spring, and then with their knowledge, we'd have something really concrete that doesn't need to be modified over and over again after we're done.
Right. All right, so Michelle, you wanna continue working on that with me? And I try to have something back for the October 14th meeting?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to continue the amendments to the signed by law until October 14th at 7:00 PM.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is design standards. I didn't see anything in the packet, and I think that was something we were I guess I was under the impression that Barbara and maybe Rodney were gonna work on something with that. Does anybody else have any update or information beyond that? All right, then I'm gonna make a motion to continue the design standards discussion until the October 14th meeting with Barbara present. Motion? Second? Barbara, I'm sorry. Michelle, you seconded that?
Yes.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the Julia's Way release of covenant update. So Kathy got a couple of answers back from council. I'll just read into the record from Amy Questle from KP Law. Stated in response to Kathy's question, in my opinion Kathy, or I should say Kathy, in my opinion, a letter from an engineer certifying that the private roadway had been constructed in general compliance with the approved plans and certificate of approval is enough to release the covenant. So Kathy, have we released those documents? I mean, I should say, have we received those documents from an engineer?
Yeah, we do have them. They need to be signed.
Okay, so we just motion to approve and we'll sign those as what, when we're at Town Hall as well?
Yep.
All right, I'd like to make a motion for the Planning Board to sign and release the covenant for Julia's Way.
Your second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, both aye. So the next item on the agenda is the master plan implementation of the fee schedule. And if you look in your packet, the next response that's highlighted, which is a continuation of that last response from council. With regard to the proposed fee schedule, Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court has created a test to distinguish between legally imposed municipal fee and an illegal imposed tax. Number one, a fee is charged in exchange for a particular governmental service, which benefits the party paying the fee in a manner not shared by other members of society. Two, is paid by choice in that the party paying the fee has the option of not utilizing governmental services and thereby avoiding the charge. And three, is it collected not to raise revenues, but to compensate the governmental entity providing the service for its expenses? And then the example of Emerson College versus Boston, 391 Mass., 415, comma, 424-25, which is a case from 1984. It's the so-called Emerson College test. In my opinion, the attached fees in this case must be carefully designed so as to ensure it meets all three requirements of this test. I have included specific notes on the attached. Did everybody get a chance to look through those notes on the attachment? Michelle, I know you worked a lot on putting this together. Do these notes that Amy's put in there give us a clear path to just some minor changes, or?
Yeah, well, and she references that we don't have a planner, but since the town is currently pursuing hiring a planner, I think that kind of addresses part of her concern. Because obviously, the town is at a point where we need a planner in order to assist with so much development that's happening. So I think that's right in line with why we're looking at these fees. I think the fees that we looked at, they're just, you know, we were very careful to make sure they were comparable to similar towns around us. So I think that should address, I think the bulk of her concern. I know, yeah, there was like a couple, you know, comments I think should be easy enough to address. And the major one was the per acre for the special permit in the DO district. You know, she kind of advised against it. So I guess that's the only one that kind of stumped me, and I wasn't sure what the best option. I would have liked to see if she had, you know, recommended something, you know, I recommend this instead, so. That's the one that I felt was a little bit of a stumbling block, but we can, we can see if maybe she could give us some counsel on what it should be, or maybe if we have a town planner in the near future, maybe they could help as well with this.
Yeah, or we just have to, and I agree with what you're saying. I'm just thinking we have so many other lines or blocks in this chart, but a lot of them are just go right above that site plan review, minor, major. So maybe we just come up with a tiered special permit for the Development Opportunities District.
All right, so if you, if you, if you do the math, 500 an acre, the minimum permit would be $12,500. So is that accurate? So if you just said the permit for a special permit for the D, excuse me, the fee for a special permit in the DO district is 12,500, and people came in at higher acreages, that would benefit, they would, they would have a little bit of savings there, you know? Is that sort of what Amy is getting at, that we should change it from a per acre to a flat fee?
Well, I'm suggesting that just because we had flat fees in the other boxes, so I think maybe that, that passes the sniff test of not a tax per acre. Because it sounds like it should be more driven by the task at hand rather than acreage. That's what I get a sense from her comments.
Right.
You know, I don't know how else to word that. If it's by the acre, even if they don't develop it, that, that in a way then, that might harm open space, because they'd wanna develop every acre possible if they're paying for it.
So rather than acreage, maybe proposed structure size or lot coverage or something like that? Because I mean, when you think of for the hospital project, something like that, that was a big project, you know, required weeks and weeks of us additional meetings, town council, attending the meetings. I know that the applicant did cover the peer review fees.
I assume that's a fairly unique, so not, not a lot of towns probably have something like that. I was gonna suggest maybe we could look to see if we knew other towns had a similar type of development opportunity, and if they had some sort of a tiered costs, or, or again, to your point of based on building size and parking coverage. Which that's, those two items are directly related to development, which would be directly related to the review. So I think, you know, I think what you're saying, Peter, is right. Maybe we do it, even if it's in one or two tiers, to say it's based on buildings' footprint size and or just impervious coverage, which would include parking loading as well as structures. So then it wouldn't harm the open space side of it, because they wouldn't be paying for open space.
I wonder if you could, if there was a way to word this so that you had a fairly large permit amount, and then you were able to reduce it for the applicant if they started showing more and more open space in their plan, like much higher than that 12,500. But if they say, hey, I'm only, I'm gonna be at less than 50% lot coverage, I'm gonna have a lot of open space, and there's, there's a bonus to them. You know what I mean? Rather than, I'm just, to, to your point, to get builders more interested in leaving some of the space untouched of the, of the minimum 25 acres. Like a really big permit fee. Really big, and then you, and then you work backwards. Just a thought. I don't even know if that would pass the, we call it the
Emerson test.
You know, if the fee was astronomical, they might say, well, that's not fair. But if you said, well, it is fair, we, you know, start to show us some savings, start to show us how you'll work this land, and, and you can get it right back down again, you know?
Yeah, and we have to be careful though, too, because then it incentivizes a heavier development on a 10-acre parcel in regular zoning if it's available.
Yeah.
I think the thing about Development Opportunities District, too, is it hasn't really been explored with the one project that came in front of us, but it's subdivisible. If you look at the way that bylaw is written, it's 25 acres, but it could be divided up like in two parcels that could be sold as a industrial park. Okay, so I think we need to revisit some of these items based on council's comments. Was Barbara helpful in this as well? Michelle? Was Barbara helpful in this as well, Michelle?
Yeah, she's the one that put together the spreadsheet originally.
Maybe we ought to shoot her a message just to review that and maybe try and have something back by the next meeting. So we can still work on the signed bylaw as well as try to get this wrapped up. And I think same thing to your point, Peter, with, with bylaw changes, things that require the public hearing. And we're not going to make fall town meeting, which I don't think we, we need town meeting actually to update our G schedule, Kathy? Or is that just requires a public hearing only?
Public hearing only.
Right, so we could still work on it and it could be implemented prior to spring town meeting. But if we had a planner in place to justify the cost as well. So motion to continue the fee review projects until October fourteenth at seven P M. I have a motion and a second, all in favor. Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. Continue that till our next meeting. We have a set of minutes from September ninth. Did everybody get a chance to review those minutes?
Yes, I did.
I know I did. Did anybody have any comments on, or any changes?
No, I reviewed and they're fine with me.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of meeting for September ninth, twenty twenty-one for the planning board.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor. Peter?
Aye.
Shell?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
So motion carries unanimously. Approve the minutes of meeting from the planning board on September ninth, twenty twenty-one. Kathy? Have these been, not these ones particularly, because I know we just approved them. But say at the last meeting or the meeting prior, we approved other minutes. Have they been posted on the website?
Yes.
I had somebody comment that they didn't see them, but maybe they just weren't looking in the right spot.
Actually, let me check right now. Yeah, actually, the last ones are from August, so those aren't posted. So I'll post both of these together.
Okay. We have some old business on the agenda. I didn't see anything in the packet, but first item is nature's remedy decision informational.
Yeah, I just thought that might be helpful because I know you, you know, Michelle had mentioned about no dispensary, but then if you saw the decision for something you looked at, it could be helpful to you, so.
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
And then correspondence from Harold Card update.
So I know there was a question about if that sixty-one A was just on that Form A law or if it also included the, the land behind that. So I did go into the Board of Assessors and was told that the only thing that he's requested is that lot. That's what all the paperwork indicates, just that one Form A law.
Okay, so did you send a letter of recommendation to the Board of Selectmen?
I haven't done that yet, but I think Tracy had let me know it's, but they need it by October, so it's on my list of to-do things.
Okay, I do know, I've been asked to go to a meeting regarding sixty-one A, the process that the town will take, just in case there is a piece that the town wants to act on. Because they only have thirty days in, in one of the paths and by the time we all do this recommendation thing, get it back to them on the next thirty days could be up and you lose an opportunity if there's a piece they want. So we, we are, as a town, a group of boards going to work on some sort of a process that probably better filters those through this recommendation process, I would assume, if nothing else. So we don't, we don't require any action on that, right, Kathy? It's all set. And at this point, we have two things to sign or three things to sign. We have Leo's subdivision and Julia's way. Release of covenant.
Yep.
Okay, I have the fire department or fire chief is working on a hazard mitigation plan committee, and he's asked for a planning board member, not just a planning board member, a member from all boards and committees to join that committee. If nobody has any interest, I would do it. But if anybody has interest and wants to do that, Peter?
Yeah, it, I figure it might be my time in the barrel to, to do it. Everybody's taking on other tasks, so I don't mind if, I don't mind if, if I did it. But if you wanted to do it instead, do they have any kind of like meeting, like thoughts on how, how often and when?
I got a sense it was going to be mostly remote and maybe just email communication.
Okay.
Did you all get a survey from them as well?
I'd have to look for that one.
Now, Peter, Mark, you know, if you guys don't want to do it, I'd be glad to do it. I mean, Mark, God knows you could, you run enough committees, but Peter, if you want to do it, all yours. Whatever you guys want, whatever you want.
I'll grab this one, Jack. You can get the next one.
Okay.
It seems like they're coming pretty steady.
So, yeah, be glad to do it. If you don't want to do it, I'll do it.
All right.
Mark, you don't need to take on it anymore, I don't think. Oh, geez.
So I'm going to make a motion to appoint Peter Conroy, the Planning Board's Hazard Mitigation Plan Committee Member.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor. Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, all right. And Kathy, will you send something to Chief O'Brien to let him know that the planning board took this action tonight?
Yep.
Thank you.
Peter, do you have his contact info as well?
He just uses his town email at the fire, at the fire department?
Yeah, I believe so.
I'll, I'll find it. I'll send him an email, tell him that he'll have, so he has my, my, my email.
Michelle, did you all right?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I think Peter wasn't sure if he saw that survey. So I think it was Tracy, I'm not, or I can't remember if it was Tracy or Lillian that sent it out, but that'll give you a good idea of what, you know?
Okay, do you have it? In case I, in case I can't find it, do we have it still?
It was a link, I think, that you, they sent a link that you clicked on and it brought you to the survey, but it was kind of online.
I'll search by Tracy and it, and it should come up. So I don't delete anything.
I'll forward it to you right now.
Oh, I got it.
Okay.
Yeah. Sent on September first, got it.
So I see Kathy, you put on discussed meeting dates for November, and that's because Thursday is Thanksgiving.
The other Thursday is Veterans Day, so right now there's no scheduled meetings for November, so I just thought you might want to take a look at that now.
And we can't meet on Veterans Day because it's a holiday?
Right.
What about the fourth and the eighteenth? Would that interfere with anyone else's meeting?
No, that works.
I think that would be fine. Jack, can you do those? November fourth and November eighteenth, because eleventh and twenty-fifth.
It's not a Wednesday, right?
No, it's both are Thursdays. It's just the first, first and the third Thursday instead of the second and the fourth.
I'm fine, because
Kathy with Z B A on the eighteenth.
Yeah, it's the eighteenth, so I couldn't do that one. But the fourth is okay.
Well, I think we're, we're still planning on doing those, what's in the eighteen. And sometimes usually creeping up around that holiday, the workload sometimes drops off a little bit, so maybe we won't end up having the eighteenth, but for now, I would say post them that the fourth and the eighteenth of November are the ones that we propose to have meetings on.
Mark, what are the two dates, please, again?
November fourth and November eighteenth.
You got it.
And you got to set your reminder later, what is before, right, Kathy?
I'm sorry?
You'll have to set a reminder for yourself like four days before, so you get the packets.
Yeah.
It's kind of, it's odd to do it at first in the third week.
Yeah.
So again, just to restate, our next planning board meeting is October fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven P M. Does anybody want to attempt to meet in person over the next month or two?
I love me.
I know Conservation's been doing it.
I mean.
Had a few, so I, I just need to reach out to I already spoke to Ed Cullen about it. Tonight would have been an ideal one because it's less than ten people. He, he said fifteen was kind of the cutoff for that meeting with the police station.
I'm good. I could do it.
Do we have much coming up in the pipeline, Kathy?
So next meeting is the public hearing, so I would think that would possibly be a lot of butters at that meeting.
And you're talking about one sixty-two bed?
Yes.
I do anticipate changes, major changes coming into that plan. And probably a continuation.
Yep.
When I say that, like, they may not be ready for the fourteenth, or we may not have a plan in time to have review based on, I, I reached out to the applicant, Dave Mora, because he had some I was going to say just planning missteps between the zoning that was in place and the proposed use. So it may come back, he had it as a residential neighborhood, it may come back either as a small commercial development or something else. I don't know, but I recommended he speak to an attorney to clarify the proper use of the property as zone rather than trying to get a special permit or something, change the zoning. And that's ultimately what he had in front of us. So we'll see. I will give you an update, but I'm going to say keep the posting for the public hearing for that. You've already started to advertise that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So worst case, we have to continue it. Open the hearing and continue it. We're not ready. Does anybody else have anything else? Kathy?
I have a question for you, Mark. You know, being a newcomer, can you guys explain to me what a priority, priority properties list is? I'm lost on that one. Kathy sent that to us. I don't know what it means. What does that mean to me?
Kathy, I got a sense that gentleman was going to come and speak to that tonight, but
I think it's just something that Barbara had mentioned when you were looking at that sixty-one A, that when you're looking at things like that, that would be a good thing to be able to look at. So I did reach out to Open Space and they did send that out, so really kind of just for your information.
Yep. Yeah, so Jack, they consider anything with priority habitat or maybe just large open fields that would be beautiful open space if they could maintain it that way? I have to assume it's half of the town. It was a hundred and thirty-four pages or something absurd, so probably the old, the old bowling alley's on that, I bet.
I think?
I'm, I'm being a wise guy, but how do you get a hundred and thirty-four pages without including something like that?
Well, there's smaller parcels, too. The, the biggest parcels are towards the top, it looks like. And then all the
Peter?
Yes. Yep.
So I'm, I'm not trying to belittle it in any way because I know that there are important pieces on there, but they covered everything.
Over three thousand acres.
So if we wanted to cross-reference that to try and find that piece on corner of Barstow and Montgomery or whatever it is, we can see if that I looked up, I want to say it was about a twenty-five acre piece at the Conservation Meeting. That's, would be where the subdivision goes.
Hey, the intersection of eighteen and seventy-nine looks good, finally.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, sure, it looks good.
Yep.
Anything would be an improvement.
Kathy, do you have anything else?
A question about scheduling a public hearing for town meeting.
Oh, yeah, I forward you that document.
Yeah.
So I just need to talk to Ari tomorrow. I'm going to see him in the morning. And I hope to have an answer, so maybe when I come in and sign stuff, I'll be able to tell you, or do, do you have dates?
I do. So it's too late to do it for your next meeting, but if you went to the, the twenty-eighth, I would have to place the ad the first week of October.
Yep.
So like you would have to vote on that tonight. Unless you want, unless you wanted to try to do it that first week in November, that Thursday, the fourth.
No, let's I'm sorry, so what date, what date did you say the meeting would be on? Twenty-eighth of October?
Yes.
And when did you say town meeting was going to be?
Is the eighth, November eighth.
So we have to do it on twenty-eight.
But like you said, if you're going to have that meeting in November, that first Thursday, the fourth.
Yeah, that'd be kind of pushing it, and I think we might have a couple other public hearings possibly, so let's, I, I make a motion to hold a public hearing on October twenty-eighth at seven P M. And I'm sorry, somebody help me out as far as the two, it was two warrant articles with the Board of Selectmen, one to change the board to select board and the other was
It's to clarify the overlay district for the marijuana.
Yeah. To, to it was a, putting a, I think a zoning map in place for the overlay that wasn't included, even though we made one at the town meeting article. So a motion to hold two public hearings for those items on October twenty-eighth.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor. Peter?
Aye.
Shell?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. Do you need more information than what was in that letter from the town administrator, Kathy?
Yeah, I already asked Tracy if she could forward me like the redlined copy, so I'll, I'll try to work with her to get anything else.
All right. And keep me posted if there's anything I need to know regarding that as it gets closer.
Okay.
Sure, when we have the public Sure, when we have the public hearing. So if that concludes business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. No, Kathy's got one more. I knew I didn't.
I just wanted to note that, um, there is a plan approval authority meeting scheduled for your next meeting. I don't have anything, so I wonder if you want to still have it or just postpone it.
Um, let's have it. You can just, uh, open and officially open it, close it and maybe post the next meeting. Because we're, have one scheduled.
For that one?
Six forty-five, yeah.
That's it.
All right. So I, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Michelle, Jack?
Aye.
Aye.
Myself. Vote aye. Motion carries unanimously. Meeting is adjourned.